Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. April twenty first, geez, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, six P M. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean is excused.
Yeah. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Minutes from three thirty twenty three, special work session, Sidewalk Summit were submitted. Minutes from four five twenty three Admin Minute was submitted. Four ten twenty three Commission Meeting. And four twelve twenty three Budget Work Session. Do we have any comments or questions? If not, the minutes will stand as submitted. And due to scheduling conflict, we will, I'm looking for a motion to postpone the presentation by the, by Chief Petty. Is that correct? Yeah.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to table item four A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Public comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Claims. Authorization for staff to void steel data checks. And resolution authorizing participation in the Board of Investment of the State of Montana Short Term Investment Pool. And authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related there to a repealing resolution number two zero six two four. Comments, questions, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just here to answer any questions on the consent agenda if you have them.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mister Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to prove consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda items A through C.
At second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Bid awards, Transportation Systems. Bought bought awards twenty twenty three chip seal Transportation System directed Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening.
This is for our twenty twenty three chip seal project number ninety three. On April fourth, twenty twenty three, the, we opened bids. We only had a single bidder on this one, and that was Helena Sand and Gravel. They were determined to be the lowest responsible bidder for schedules A through E for a total of six hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty and twenty four cents with a unit price of about three dollars and twenty four cents per square yard. Last year's per square yard cost was three thirty two. For those listening, there may not be familiar, chip seals are new wear surface and pavement sealer that we do about every seven years on roadways to extend their longevity and increase their wear surface. With this year's project, we're doing approximately eleven point three miles of roadway within the city. Staff recommends awarding the schedules A through F to Helena Sand and Gravel. So with that, in the amount of six hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and twenty four cents, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Is that, you say Alpha through Echo?
Yes.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
And I'm having some slight technical difficulties, so we are talking about all of the bid awards right now. Yes?
That's correct.
Yes. In that case, if I might ask a question?
Please.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor Director Knopki. We did receive a comment from M TAC on item C and E. Are you familiar with the comments? Um, not sure exactly. Okay, I'm happy to summarize. I just didn't want to do that if it was not necessary. On item C, M TAC made a recommendation that the bid award include an amendment that the ADA ramp project on six include curb bulb outs in compliance with the complete street policy. So I'll start with that one. Could you talk about the feasibility of an amendment for bulb outs on that project? Thank you. Uh, Mayor Commissioners, the feasibility of putting bulb outs in and within this maintenance project, while it is feasible, it may take some time to get those installed. We can definitely take a look at it, but the original project is visioned as upgrading the existing non-compliant ADA ramps that are along Sixth Avenue so that we can do a mill and overlay next year as required by a DOJ ruling. Mister Mayor, if I might, a quick follow up?
Please.
Um, it's a two-part follow-up. So part one, if bulb outs are in the, in line with complete streets policy, why would we not be doing that? And is it possible as a secondary follow-up to add an amendment that at a further phase of the project that would be considered? Is there a way to do that? Thank you. Uh, Mayor Commissioners are certainly it's certainly able to amend that and try to get those bulb outs in, in identified areas. It may delay the mill and overlay for next year, but we can do the best that we can with the time we have. Again, this was a maintenance project, and in order to add any more asphalt, the DOJ requires the ADA ramps, corner ramps be upgraded to current standard. So that is why the ADA ramp projects precedes the mill and overlay so that we comply with that DOJ order. Uh, thank you, Director Knopki and Mister Mayor. If it would be possible, and I will defer to the City Attorney on how best to do it to include an amendment that ADA projects, ramp projects include curb bulb outs at whatever phase in the project is most appropriate. That would be what I would support.
Go ahead.
Mayor Commissioner Reed, the best way to do it would to be to ask for an amendment on the motion. Is there a motion on the table right now? To approve all of them?
Right.
I think it was just for the first one, wasn't it?
We, yeah, we'll go down the line and then we'll get to that and maybe you can.
So that would be the potential to do a motion just to include the, as you've requested Commissioner Reed, when you get to letter C, if you're doing them separately, that might be the easiest way to do it, if you're going to do them separately.
Thank you.
That answer the question?
It did. Thank you. And I will proceed thusly. And then Mister Mayor, if I might, a quick question on item E or bid award E?
Yeah, just, just a moment. I think, uh, Director, Manager Burton wants to add something to that. Go ahead.
Mayor, and if I understand the motion, it would give us an opportunity to analyze the impact of this change financially and otherwise and report back to the City Commission.
Right.
Mister Mayor, if I might, a quick question. So this would seem to change the work required in the bid. Is that or say we approve this amendment, that would seem to me like it's changing the work that was specified in the bid. So we're awarding a specific bid for specific work. How does that impact things here?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, yes, you are correct. We're awarding monies for not only the sixth but other areas of town where we've identified ADA ramps are needed. So that would either impact those areas of where, you know, potentially reducing the number ADA ramps that are completed or looking for additional funds as the manager had talked about how the impact of this would be on the funding scenario and report back.
Follow up, Mister Mayor?
Please.
So that wouldn't require this going back out to bid?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I don't believe so. This would be in, in the spirit of the ADA ramps being approved. What we would do for those other monies, like I said, would either potentially impact this or find other monies, safety monies that we could implement add to this project to get those bulb outs done in certain areas.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Mister Knopki.
Go ahead. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I will do my best to make a motion that covers all of that. I think I have an idea of how to do that. And then on bid award E, it was recommended that, and I don't know if this is possible, so I will ask, is it possible based on the M TAC recommendation on item E to include an amendment that the city pursue a TIF application with the project as matching funds for the Centennial Trail connection? I don't know enough about the details of bid award E to know if that is possible?
Mayor Commissioner, uh, this is a utility project, so it is just replacing, it's replacing a water main in National. And so it's going to be very difficult to use it as any matching funds to do Centennial Trail because it's apples to oranges. And then to delay this bid award to see if we can get TIF projects, but we could take a TIF project forward if Transportation Systems is willing for Centennial Trail, but it would have to stand on its own. This is just a utility project, replace the main, get upsizing so we can have better fire flow down there for Pacific and the brewery and stuff like that.
Mister Mayor, if I might, just a quick follow up?
Please.
Thank you. Just to make sure I understand, so if we award the bid as is today, would it preclude or would it make any, would it challenge in any way the completion of Centennial Trail from that temporary end at National Avenue? Would it impact that in any way if we move forward as is?
Mayor Commissioner, no, it will not affect Centennial Trail whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. So we'll try this individually. Where we, we'll start with A. Do you have any questions, comments? Do we have any public comments on Alpha, on A? I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor?
Go ahead.
Of course, I've made the motion and lost the language. Hold on. I move to award, uh, transportation. Oh, boy. Hang on. Here it is. I got it. I move to award, nope, because it schedules, all right, I move to award schedule A of can I do that? I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, given the language of the, the proposed motion. There's a total amount, and if we're doing it individually, is that going to matter?
Mayor Commissioner Reed, I think the mayor requested separately, you were starting with A?
Yep, because the recommended language, I believe, is a total amount. I'm trying to flip through them.
Saying is that on page one oh five?
Mm-hmm. I think you could move to award schedule, schedule A as proposed by the department and leave it at that.
Okay.
And we'll report back about, you know, if it, and for those that need reporting back, we will.
Okay.
And I think if you just refer to as, as proposed by the department, as long as there's no changes, we will know what the, what the motion is at the time.
Okay. Again, apologies for causing confusion with that.
Hold on one minute, Commissioner Reed.
So Mayor Commissioners, just to clarify, this item A is for the chip seal project.
Right.
And item B is the sidewalk improvement. So when we say move to award the schedules A through E, that's only for the chip seal. That's not for the remainder of the bid awards tonight. That's, it stands by its own. A through F is, or A through E is six hundred and forty eight, nine hundred and eighty thousand on the chip seal alone, not including the sidewalks or ADA ramps.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you. I did. I apologize if A through E was confusing. Um, with that, Mister Mayor, I will move to, uh, award schedules A through E of T S D project number ninety three, twenty twenty three chip and seal to the lowest responsible bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel, for the amount of six hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and twenty four cents.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Commissioners? Commission proposing?
I, I can do item B if nobody else wants to do that. No? Okay. I, Mister Mayor, I move to approve award of the twenty twenty three sidewalk improvement program, project T S D ninety four to all around construction for an agreement amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
I have no comment online.
I'll entertain, uh, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, where are we now?
We're at item C, Mister Mayor, so if it's all right, I will.
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming I can make an original motion to amend. We don't have to wait for a first motion. I see.
Please.
Cool. Mister Mayor, I move to amend item C. And I would move to approve award of the twenty twenty three ADA ramp program subject to a review of including bulb outs in the Sixth Avenue ADA ramp project. Uh, T S D ninety two to all around construction for an agreement amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Public comments? Madam Clerk? Any online?
Mister Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay. Let's move along.
Mister Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion on item six D. If that's where we're, if I'm in the right place.
Yes, you are.
All right. So I would make a motion to, uh, award the twenty nineteen C I P P Sewer Main Rehabilitation Project number nineteen dash thirty five to the lowest responsible bidder planned and engineered construction incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred.
Second. Move the second and final discussion. Public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mister Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Would you take the role?
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Let's go ahead. Echo?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
For item six E, I would move to award the National Avenue Water Main Replacement Project number twenty dash zero four to the lowest responsible bidder Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and forty five dollars.
Head second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
I have no public comment online.
Would you take the role?
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, Commissioners, proposals from you. Let's see. Okay, we're moving along. Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager?
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council, H C C Representative Susan Smith. You have the floor. Madam Clerk, do we have her online?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
District Six, H C C. I'm happy to be here today just to let you know that what H C C is doing. Um, we have many things going on. Um, we have a meeting on Wednesday, April twenty sixth, coming up to do some strategic planning and to develop a long-term plan for the projects and the proposals that we would like to place in priority. That will be planned by all of us at the Civic Center. Uh, we also have, um, an outreach campaign to introduce ourselves to our districts, to our community members to allow them to find out what we are doing and what we are about and to get more recruits, more involvement. We have door hangers that we prepared to send out to the districts to our, each person is going to hang up, to knock on fifty doors within their areas. And we'll try to tell them who we are, introduce ourselves and get more input into the city government, their issues, their concerns. We're also going to have a suggestion box. That's on this, at the City County Building near the Registrar's Registration Office. We're going to also plan meetings at the library to where we will all gather and meet to meet the, our constituents and the people of our districts and our neighbors. So we're trying to, to do much in the way of outreach and involvement and to do some planning about what we can do better. What we can get involved in. So I think that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the Commission? Public comments? Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate your input. Regular items. Consider a resolution of intention to set fees charged by Helena Police Department Support Services Division and amend in resolution number two zero two four four. Okay, you, you, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. Um, we brought this information forward to the uh, City Commission Administrative Meeting for the S S D feeds. This is just the resolution of intention to set a public hearing so that we could move forward with that public hearing and and get the fee schedule in place. If you have any questions, I am here to answer any, or the Police Chief Brett Petty is here as well.
Comments or questions? Any public comments online?
I have no public comment online.
In the audience? No. Entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of intent to set fees charged by the Helena Police Department Support Services Division and amending resolution number two zero two four four and to set a public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Hey.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five, four to zero.
Consider a resolution of intentions to set fee charge for the use of Helena Civic Center and repealing resolution twenty six two six, two zero six two six. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Again, these fees that are changing at the Civic Center were presented to the Commission at the administrative meeting by Director Doug Smith and Byron Dyke, who's the Civic Center Manager to help deter some of the costs of operating the facilities due to inflationary costs, staffing, increased costs. And I'm here to, I know that they did a pretty lengthy review of setting the fees and feel that they're modest and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, or I believe Doug Smith, Director Smith is online as well.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Any online?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve a resolution of intention to set fees charged for use of the Helena Civic Center and repealing resolution number two zero six two six and to set a public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution of intention to establish fees to be charged for the last chance splash water park and pool and repealing resolution number two zero three three two. Any discussion from the Commission? Any public comments? Any online?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of intent to establish fees to be charged for the last chance splash water park and pool and repealing resolution number two zero three three two and to set a public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to establish fees to be charged for the City of Helena Park and open space uses and recreation programs. And repealing resolution number two zero six zero two. Comments or questions from the Commission? Public comments? Any public comments online?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to establish fees to be charged for City of Helena Park and Open Space Uses and Recreation Programs and repealing resolution number two zero six zero two and a set of public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, moving along. Consider an ordinance establishing a parade, special events, tour, vendor requirements and amending the possession of intoxicating beverages code in the City of Helena. Attorney Doctor and or Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll start off and, uh, City Attorney Doctor can chime in.
Uh, this is just to, uh, establish that ordinance requiring, um, certain requirements of uh, special events in the city. This was presented at a city administrative meeting and the, there are a couple, um, errors in the draft that we provided in this, uh, in your packet that will be corrected prior to the second reading. Uh, the public notice will be coming out next week announcing the second reading date of May eighth. Um, just to highlight a few of those, uh, we're gonna revise sections five one one, possession of intoxicating beverages, revise it to be issued by the city manager instead of having to come to the city commission for each one of those. Propose moving portions of section seven nine five to nine one one, the special or parade, special event alcohol and vendors permit required. Revising, uh, adding the event size and then review the timeframes to better serve applicants. So this is for those smaller events, we're requesting thirty days as it is now for review. But for the larger events over a thousand, um, participants and spectators for, uh, a review time of ninety days to allow staff and the applicant to meet and work out any issues that we see with those. Um, add tour as a special event because the tour train and other, um, touring activities, um, are cropping up and, uh, we need that added in there. And uh, potential long-term agreements for reoccurring events, so like Pride and, uh, Gov Cup, we can sign a five to seven year agreement with them. And basically they're permitted for those years minus some minor, um, uh, revisions as in like dates, but if there's any major, then we start, um, the process over. But if it's the same course, the same, just different changes to different dates and insurance, then that's put in there to provide a quicker turnaround time for those, those larger, um, reoccurring events. You bet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Mayor, may I add?
Please.
The change or the errors in the draft that you see before you are formatting errors. They are not substantive. So what you read before you is the proposed changes and, and there is nothing, uh, that would change in the final passage unless there was, uh, suggestion through the commission. But otherwise, nothing, um, would change except for formatting. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
You bet. Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead.
So relative to, uh, perhaps for the city attorney, relative to section five dash one dash one, um, the change is that, uh, let's see. Hang on just a moment. So the last sentence it reads, provided however, that this section shall not apply to any individual who possesses alcohol or intoxicating beverages pursuant to a permit issued by the city in accordance with the provisions of the code. So it would be that sentence that would be changed.
That's correct. Mayor Commissioner Logan, it would instead put the requirement to issue the permit on the city manager or his or her des- designee. And the underlying provision there is the addition to the code language.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, follow up, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the rest of that particular part of code would remain the same.
It would, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Attorney Doctor.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. Consider, I'd like to make a motion to consider first passage of an ordinance establishing a parade, special events, tours, vendor requirements and amending the possession of intoxicating beverages code in the City of Helena.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, was there any public comment?
Okay. I think I skipped public comments. Well, of any public comments? Do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider changes to the facade of four fours zero South Park Avenue subject, subject to an existing facade Eastman, City County Heritage Preservation Officer. Atartha, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here to just, uh, to talk about the facade Eastman at four forty South Park. Um, I do have a PowerPoint, so if you don't mind, I'll go over here.
Sure.
Make sure that this is turned on. There we go. Now it's on. Um, so this is the Tatum House. The historic Tatum House. Uh, so this house was built in eighteen seventy-two. Um, it's the sole surviving structure of the Helena Iron Works, which was established around eighteen sixty-eight. It was Helena's first iron foundry.
You need to share.
Okay, uh, so as I was saying, this was Helena's first iron foundry. Um, the building has pretty much, um, not changed since it was built. There's just a, uh, not much done to it except for the addition you can see there from two thousand and six. The, uh, that was not subject to the easement. Here it is in nineteen forty-seven. You can see it pretty much looks like it was, uh, initially, um. So the, the owners proposed to change structures used from a hair salon to residential condominiums. There'll be one condo in the addition and one condo in the, uh, the main, main, um, part of the building, the original section. So this facade easement was recorded on a, on November seventh, nineteen seventy-four. This is part of the urban renewal. Um, had basically gave funds to people in the nineteen seventies to improve their, um, improve their facades and as, uh, uh, in, 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 in exchange, the owners put a facade easement, which is, you know, is recorded in the deeds. It runs in perpetuity with the, with the, um, property. And basically the facade easement says no construction alteration or remodeling shall be undertaken or permitted that would affect either the lot described inherent or the exterior, including the roof of any building or other improvement located thereon without the permission of the City of Helena assigned by its mayor. So, um, this project was reviewed initially by the Heritage Tourism Council. And, uh, they reviewed the plans that were submitted to you in the memo. And they, um, approved the plan as it was, um, this, it was, it's a February twenty-second night, uh, two thousand twenty-three plan. They approved that. And so we are submitting it to you for approval. Um, all work on the building has been suggested to comply with, um, the Secretary of the Interior's standards as well as the Helena desired, desired guidelines for, um, neighborhoods, historic neighborhoods. So you'll see here's the front or the south facade just involves repairing the eighteen seventy-two windows and door, installing, um, exterior wooden storm windows and storm door and restore, repairing the historic balcony. Um, and any, uh, replacement would be in kind with reproductions as needed. This is a north elevation. Again, repairing windows and installing exterior wooden storms. And then there are only three elevations that we're dealing with because the rear elevation is literally against a rock wall. So the south elevation would be installing a wooden storm door over, uh, that you see over here on the left. And repairing historic windows, installing, installing exterior storm windows, the same as on the other sides. Repair, repairing the historic balcony, replacing, uh, in kind as needed. And then here, there's an addition right here, uh, a non-sympathetic addition that will be demolished and replaced with a historically compatible uh, brick addition in the footprint of the previous, um, modern addition. So the H T C recommends approval of the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three plans for four forty South Park Avenue.
Thank you, Mrs. Tord. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, this question maybe for the owner or the architect, if they are present. I don't.
I think they're on Zoom.
Are they? Gonna make, uh, gonna make the assumption that they're good with these plans as well.
They submitted them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
They are there at the meeting, the Heritage Tourism Council meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? If not, any public comments? Any online?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the plans of February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three to allow the removal of metal storm windows and doors and replace them with wood storm doors. Wood storm windows and storm doors and the repair of the exterior balconies as they conform to the design guidelines. Recommend approval to remove the existing nonhistoric addition on the south side of the building to replace with a new addition on sheet A three hundred, figure four of said plans.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Any public comments? Any online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Adara.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You also. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Emily Frazier. I am the Executive Director of the Helena Area Community Foundation. And I just wanted to stop in briefly to ask for your consideration of participating in Greater Helena Gives. This is the twenty-four hour giving campaign hosted by the Helena Area Community Foundation and is meant to be a day of um, celebration of and fundraising for local area nonprofits. Uh, we have one hundred and nine nonprofit organizations registered at this point, which is pretty great. Um, and the, the, the campaign as a whole has really been growing over the last several years. In twenty nineteen, I believe it raised somewhere in the range of eighty-nine thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, it was a hundred and fifty some thousand dollars. Last year it was two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, so it really has been a, a growing trend and one that we hope will continue. Um, in particular, I would ask for the city to consider, um, creating or allowing us to create a portal for employees of the city wherein they would be allowed to, they'd be, anyone is able to make a donation as is. But if, uh, an employer is willing to, uh, create a portal, we can, we can brand something that would have your city branding and perhaps a message about your philanthropic goals and would invite your employees to give through that portal. Uh, essentially, uh, it would be our hope that that would increase the overall donations to the event, uh, increase the total number of donors. We've asked other organizations to join in as well. Um, but also it would be a good opportunity for city employees to, um, feel more connected to their nonprofit community, uh, and for the city to gain, uh, positively helpful data about the interests and the giving priorities of your employees. Uh, and so we have sent information about this to your system. Um, it is done without cost to, of course, the city or, um, there are ways that you can utilize the, the portal to also uh, create matches or challenges if you'd like. Um, but again, our goal is just to get the word out there and hopefully include our, our lovely city employees, of which there are quite a few, in participating with our nonprofit event. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Frazier, thank you very much for the opportunity. Um, wanted to ask, what's your goal for this year?
So we have always shied away from setting financial goals because they can be very unpredictable and we don't like being disappointed. So we typically focus on our goals of increasing the number of nonprofits participating and the number of donors who come to the site. And so last year we had ninety-six nonprofits and we reached nine hundred and ninety-some donors, just, just a hair under a thousand. And so we're looking to get, we're really hoping to break eleven hundred, to be honest, uh, donors. And we already have a record number of nonprofits. Typically, the dollars follow that. So my great hope is that we'll at least break a quarter million this year, but, um, you know, it kind of depends on a lot of factors and we, we've made a couple of changes in the past. This has been a Thursday, Friday event. Um, and we've found that momentum of the event is impacted by the vigilante parade. So we've moved it to be a Wednesday, Thursday event. All of these things give me pause and make me lose sleep, but on the whole, we're looking really good and I, I think it's gonna be a great giving year and and again, just a good day to remember the sheer number and variety of nonprofits that serve our community and make Helena one of the places we love to live.
Thank you. Any other comments from Ms. Frazier? Yes.
Mayor, I'd like the opportunity to visit with the city attorney on this request talk about to the scope or what would the scope be where the city could participate and we'll follow up with Ms. Frazier, uh, tomorrow.
You bet.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.